And the benefit of good guidance to perform our duties honestly, wisely, fearlessly, and well for the good of those we deserve. Please be seated. I will call the regular meeting of council to order for August 21st. And just ask Mr. Williams, are there any late items? I believe he had one additional item to add.
Yes, Your Worship, there is one late item for the closed session under second ninety-one C, labor relations or other employee relations.
Okay.
I would also note that our delegation for today hasn't arrived just yet, so that may be something we need to remove from the agenda.
So we'll have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Thank you, seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. So we move to the adoption of the minutes. We have the July seventeenth council minutes for adoption. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And August eighth, committee of the whole minutes and a motion for adoption. Thank you. Moved, seconded. Discussion on those minutes? None, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so our delegation on the agenda for this evening has not, if they do get here in a few minutes, we might, if everybody'd be amenable to hearing them at that point. Okay. All right, we have the report from the chief administrative officer, and you've circulated that and going to speak to the highlights, I take it, Mr. Vertag?
Thank you, Your Worship. The Canada Avenue utility undergrounding paving was completed on August fifteenth, as well as a number of paving projects last week, including Canada Avenue southbound from Station Street to Government, Coronation Street was bound on, from St. Julian to Vestry Road, and a few other locations on Trunk Road. City water projects, there's a couple of those in North Couchin that have just gotten underway, one on Rosewood and one in Uplands. The TCH Boulevard improvements, including the trail in front of the Remy Inn, the request for proposals for the landscape consultant have been prepared and will be issued shortly. They also wanted to note that staff have received approval to make improvements to the letdown for the pedestrian issues on Underwood Street, and bill Couchin tribes for that work in order to facilitate getting done expediently. And lastly, wanted to note that council is scheduled to reconsider the timing of the referendum at a special meeting on September fifth, and the amalgamation working group consisting of two councils from each municipality is set to meet this week to discuss a framework for the communications plan, and the result of those discussions will be provided to council prior to September fifth. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we move on to the August eighth, committee of the whole recommendations, and there's four of them, and I'll turn to Councilor Staples to bring those recommendations forward.
Okay, so the seven point one, the grants and aid policy, that council approved the yearly ongoing grants and aid policy as attached to the August eighth, twenty seventeen report by the Director of Finance, and the council approved the annual application grants and aid policy, and that the grants and aid policy implemented in twenty fifteen as attached be repealed.
Okay, yeah, seconded. Any discussion on that recommendation? Okay, none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Seven point two, perpetual arts trophy policy, that council approved the proposed perpetual arts trophy policy identified as attachment A to the August eighth, twenty seventeen report by the Acting Director of Corporate Services as amended to include the committee of the whole's recommendation.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Seven point three, perpetual trophy for excellence in sportsmanship policy, that council approved the amended perpetual trophy for excellence in sportsmanship policy identified as attachment A to the August eighth, twenty seventeen report by the Acting Director of Corporate Services as amended to include the committee of the whole's recommendation.
Seconded. Thank you. Discussion? Councilor Jackson?
I like both of these because there is going to be an invitation to the public to recommend people as well. Normally in the past, I believe, we only invited the media and a couple of organizations, and now it's kind of open to the whole community, so I think that's great.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Seven point four, town crier guidelines, that the March third, twenty fourteen town crier role guidelines be repealed and replaced with the town crier role guidelines as attached to the August eighth, twenty seventeen report by the Director of Corporate Services.
Seconded. Thank you. Any discussion? Councilor Jackson?
I think this has been discussed with the present town crier, and I think he's been made fairly aware of what council's thinking on this is, and I still think it's generous, and I would like to thank him also for doing such a great job, so, thank you, Ms. Bass.
Thank you. He has quite a presence when he goes to events, and, you know, he's very creative in his cries, and I think that's been recognized in some of the individual competitions he's gone to, so I would repeat that thank you to Mr. Bass. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. This is, the next item on the agenda is reports from staff, and this is a report for information, but there is a motion to receive for the report for information purposes. Ms. Salter, would you like to speak to this report directly, or? This is with respect to the red balloon at One Ten Big Street and the tax sale next steps.
So just to let all of council know, we are required by law to hold a tax sale every year on the last Monday in September, so that is September twenty-fifth this year. All properties who have delinquent taxes, so that's taxes from twenty fifteen outstanding, are required to be sold at tax sale. When this building was demolished, council followed the procedure, which was to send an invoice for the cost of demolition, and when that invoice remained unpaid at the end of the year, the funds were put on the property taxes, so that did become a twenty fifteen property tax charge, which means that as of September twenty-fifth of this year, we are required by law to sell that property at tax sale. The last assessment of that property, because it no longer has a building on it, was, is at a maximum of about two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. The amount outstanding or the upset price to purchase that property would be closer to five-hundred thousand dollars. So chances are, the city will become the property owner at the tax sale, in all likelihood. If that occurs, we are required to essentially hold on to the property in pretty much its current state, because there is one year, a one-year redemption period, where a person can redeem the property by paying the amount of the upset price, whatever was paid at auction, and so if the city became registered, we obviously wouldn't pay ourselves, so it would just be the upset price plus interest to that date.
Okay, thank you. And there is a motion here that the council receive the August twenty-first, twenty seventeen red balloon tax sale next steps report by the Director of Finance for information. Moved? Seconded. Thank you. Any discussion on this? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So we move on to bylaws. These are first and second readings. The first bylaw, which is bylaw number three-one-seven-two, twenty seventeen official community plan amendment bylaw, the council give first and second readings to the OCP amendment bylaw number three-one-seven-two, twenty seventeen. A bylaw to amend map one, land use map of official community plan, bylaw number two-zero-three-zero, two thousand and seven, and the council set a public hearing date for Monday, September eighteenth, twenty seventeen, and direct the staff to advise in accordance with the local government act, advertise in accordance with the local government act. So, Ms. You know, I appreciate that you're going to follow up with this, so, thank you.
I'm just going to go over briefly what this map covers and the changes that are proposed. So the map one of the official community plan, the land use map, guides the general land use and density within the city. It also shows some neighborhood nodes and as well as some heritage sites. And in order to adopt the proposed new zoning bylaw that is also on the agenda, we need to amend the land, the current land use map for the zones that we're proposing to change. So on this map, I've outlined just some of the areas that are proposed to be changed on the land use map. So in this area, just off of Jubilee is currently commercial, and we're proposing to change it to mixed use, or high-density or medium-density residential. And there are a few other changes. The Charles Hooey Park and the train station parking lot are currently also shown within the commercial, so just to update that, we've changed that to parks use, as well as extended the heritage site as well. Over on the east side of the highway, off of Bundock, we are proposing to change currently their identity residential, and in the new zoning bylaw, they're proposed to be medium-density residential, and this fits with mainly with the current land use that are in those areas. Couple other changes, just up at the north end of Jubilee Street, changing White Road, on the north side of White Road, from low-density residential to medium-density residential, and some other couple, changes to a couple of other properties there as well, low-density to medium-density, and then low-density on this one to commercial. So just to show you again the updated map, the new, we changed the colors also to correspond with the new zoning map as well.
Okay, thank you. So this is, this is in direct connection with the zoning bylaw amendment that will be coming forward to amend the zoning bylaw, update it, so that both community plan and zoning bylaws are in accordance.
Yes.
Yeah. Any questions of Ms. You know on this? We've had quite a presentation of council, of course, the committee will have an opportunity now on, if this motion passes, on Monday, September eighteenth, at a public hearing to provide any comment, and we would encourage people, both positive and negative feedback or constructive feedback, before we move on to third reading, so appreciate if people would take the time to look it over on our website, I'm sure it's posted on the website?
Yes.
And it's on the title page of the website, the links or?
I believe, I'd have to check with Page, whether there's a link on the, on the main page of our website to the zoning bylaw update.
There is, thank you.
Yeah.
Great, excellent. Councilor Jackson?
So, as far as I can tell, this is mostly making certain areas to high-density or higher-density or commercial. There's no downzoning anywhere, there's, isn't anything that's like a red flag for you or for anybody here on council?
No, we're not proposing to change the land use to lower density in any other areas.
With respect to the discussions and presentations we've had previously, there was going to be a change in zoning in the use of retail car sales, I believe, in the downtown area, so there may be some properties that change.
That's in the zoning though, not in the just general land use in the OCP.
Okay. Ms. William?
I may just correct myself. The link to the zoning bylaw rewrite is actually under planning and development, but we can put a tab on our homepage.
Okay. I think that might, might be so, just so it's easily accessible by people right off the bat, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, great, thank you for that. Okay, so we've read the motion, it's, and do I, do we, did we have a mover and second at this point?
Apologies.
No. So moved, seconded, seconded, okay. Any discussion, further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. So we move to item nine-two, which is the bylaw three-one-six-six, twenty seventeen, the zoning bylaw, that council give first and second readings to zoning bylaw number three-one-six-six, twenty seventeen, a bylaw to regulate the use of land. Buildings and structures require off-street parking and loading spaces, and establish standards for the provision of landscaping, and the council set a public hearing date for Monday, September twenty-eighteenth, for direct, and direct staff to advertise in accordance with the local government act. Is there a mover for that? Seconded, thank you. And Ms. Joe, would you like to give a brief?
Yeah, I have the presentation up again, I'll go through it, maybe not in quite so much detail as I did with committee of the whole, but I'm going to go through some of the proposed changes in the zoning bylaw. So I'll go through some of the general changes in the bylaw, and the new maps within the bylaw, as well as go through the individual residential, commercial, and community use So the current zoning bylaw was adopted in nineteen eighty-eight, and staff believe no longer reflects the objectives in the official community plan, as well as later plans that have been adopted by council, the Community Energy and Emissions Plan, and the University Village Local Area Plan, for example, and the new bylaw is intended to facilitate appropriate development that meets the needs of Duncan's residents, as well as encourage redevelopment of properties in areas where they're, where it is considered appropriate. Some of the features of the new zoning bylaw are a more clear and simple layout, and reducing the number of zones from sixteen zones to eight zones. We've changed the density for residential, for medium and high-density residential, as well as commercial zones from units per hectare to a floor area ratio, which I will go over later on in the presentation. And we've included some incentives for development, and we've also, not listed on here, added the parking regulations, as well as the landscaping and screening regulations from individual bylaws, we've added them into the new zoning bylaw, so those older bylaws will be repealed as well. So some of the changes in the zoning bylaw are just some new regulations to clarify that an accessory building may not be used as a dwelling unit unless it is permitted as a secondary suite. We've added some regulations for fabric cover structures that may be used for storage for vehicles or boats, but, and so we've added regulations to restrict the use of those for only the winter months. And we've also carried forward regulation from our current bylaw to restrict home-based businesses within multi-unit dwellings to, to not involve regular attendance of persons other than the operators of those businesses. And we have updated the density within multifamily and commercial zones, and also we've added minimum heights to many of those zones as well. We've added mobile food vending, and we've also, as I mentioned, added some density bonusing provisions to allow for additional density, where they, where a developer is providing desirable amenities for the community. So to date, the public consultation that has been conducted is that we've had a place speak page, the web platform that allows for, for public comments and viewing of all of the related documents. We've also held three open houses, and held a booth at the farmer's market one Saturday, and we sent referrals to other jurisdictions, including North Couchin, Severdi, and also not included on here is Couchin tribes as well. So this is our proposed new zoning map and our current zoning map, so we've, as you can see, there are less, less colors in our, sorry, I'm having trouble going back, in our new zoning map, and we've also changed the coloring, we've also proposed to pre-zone or to change the zoning for some sites in order to facilitate redevelopment. And just going to go into, just show some examples of some of the zoning that has been This is showing, partially showing the Jubilee Street area just north of downtown, so where currently we have several multifamily, different multifamily zones. The majority of the area we're proposing to be high-density residential, which has a minimum height of three stories. I'll go through some of the density and other regulations later on. That's one example. As I mentioned, White Road currently on the north side is, is single-family, proposing to change that to medium-density. And then change some of the commercial zoning further along Canada Avenue as well from, so we have, currently we have C one, or sorry, over here, currently have C one and some C three. So C one, just up past Beverly Street, and then changing to neighborhood commercial north of that. For the, for the downtown, you can see we're, we're still proposing mainly commercials, we have the new downtown commercial zone, replacing the C one commercial zone. Just east of downtown, posing some change in zoning to neighborhood commercial, the orange here, and over further along Coronation, as well as changing some of, where previously was medium-density residential, changing a lot of that to high-density residential. Along the highway, we have the new highway commercial zone, and then east of the highway, changing some of the multifamily zone to medium-density. We're proposing to leave, all of the current R one zoning east of the highway, we're proposing to leave, although in the, in the OCP map, you may have noticed that it is shown as high-density. In the future, if rezoning applications come forward, this could facilitate higher-density development, but for the moment, we're leaving it low-density. We have some new maps within the zoning bylaw as well, so we have an area that's included within a below-grade parking map, so new development will have to provide at least fifty percent of their parking underground, so these are areas that the city has been monitoring the ground, the groundwater for several years now, and have determined that is suitable for underground parking in this area. So this is in the downtown, it's hard, you can't really see the street names on, on here, so it's within the downtown, and then just east of downtown towards the highway, so the highway is, is right here. We have an area within the downtown where there is an additional front setback from, from the zoning regulations, so an additional two-meter setback for front and exterior side parcel lines, so this will allow for a potential street or sidewalk widening, and to improve the streetscape as well. Within the downtown, we also have a shared access map, so on the highlighted streets, there's a minimum of forty-meter frontage to allow for a driveway access, so they will, so properties will have to share, provide a shared access, and this will reduce the number of driveway crossings crossing sidewalks, and allow for safer conditions for pedestrians. So we've combined a number of the residential zones to simplify the zoning into low-density, medium-density, and high-density zones. Under the low-density residential, we currently do allow secondary suites. We've made some changes to the secondary suites regulations, I haven't included in the bylaw, but this should allow some more flexibility, for instance, in a detached secondary suite, there currently is a maximum size of sixty-five square meters. In the proposed bylaw, the new maximum size is nine, will allow for a ninety-square-meter detached suite, also allows for, for a higher maximum height for an accessory building. And we've also updated the, I've included a comparison here just to show the regulations, so we've reduced some of the minimum setbacks for, for front and side exterior and rear. Moving on to the medium-density, as I mentioned, we've changed the density from units per hectare to floor area ratio, so floor area ratio limits this, just the size, the total gross floor area of a building, in comparison to the size of the lot. So these illustrations just demonstrate that in a, for example, in a one-point-oh floor ratio, not that our actual zoning regulations would allow full site coverage for a one-story building, that could allow this size of a building, or if it was two stories, it would basically be a building that would cover half the lot. We've also introduced some density bonusing provisions, so this would allow for, so we've included a base density in the, in the medium-density and higher zones, and then we allow for two levels of bonus densiting if the developer provides either housing agreement for affordable or rental housing, and, or level two would also be a housing agreement, but for a, for a larger percentage of the unit and for a longer period of time, or alternatively, if they provide a hundred percent of their parking within the structure or underground, or if they achieve level three of the new VC Building Code Energy Step Code. So again, some reduced setbacks within the medium-density zone, and we've also, in the medium-density zone, we're proposing a two-story minimum height for principal Maximum height in a high-density zone will be five stories. Currently, for the highest-density zone that we have, RM six A is, or RM six, allows for six stories. This would be reducing it a bit, but also adding a minimum height of three stories. Moving on to the commercial zones, we've combined the zones into downtown comprehensive, neighborhood commercial, and highway commercial zone. So currently, in the downtown, we have zero-meter setbacks, we're proposing to, to add a one-meter setback to the front property line, but, but still keeping it at zero meters for Station Street or Craig Street, where we've already conducted a lot of street improvements and have nice wide sidewalks in those areas. And we've also added a two-story minimum height for the principal building, and then six stories for, if it's a mixed-use development, or four stories for other uses for the maximum And then neighborhood commercial, also adding a minimum height, maximum, minimum height of two stories and maximum height of four stories. For the highway corridor commercial, one of the main changes is that we are proposing to remove motor vehicle sales as a permitted use, so current uses will be allowed to continue, but it will become non-conforming, and so new motor vehicle sales will not be permitted. We've also added some minimum distances between check-cashing or pawn shop uses. And then changed the name of our, some of our community or more institutional-related zones, so changing them to community use, and so community service was the current institutional zone, and then community park for current parks and recreation zone. So community service would be, well, city hall, institutional uses or, or cultural use, such as a religious use, or hospital, or also allowing for, for daycare within the community service zone. And then we have community park zone, we have regulations for, for buildings, although we don't have a lot of buildings within our community parks currently. So in summary, staff are positive that the zoning bylaw will implement our community plans and provides a simple, clear format and an organization that is more user-friendly, and will positively guide future development within the city.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Jackson, you have a question?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things to say, a couple of questions and a couple of comments. I think changing institutional to community service is very ambiguous, everybody understands what institutional is. Community service could be the volunteer couch, and it can be United Way, it could be anything that does a community service. Everybody understands what institutional means, which is like a church or a, you know, a government office or something like that, or the courthouse, I beg your pardon. So I'm, I'm not crazy about the word community service, it's just way too ambiguous. The first question I have, pardon me, is you're talking about affordable housing as being- being, excuse me? Not more than 18% of the median gross household income in the city of Duncan. I wonder if you could explain that, please, because, I beg your pardon. In, uh, most measurements, you know, as far as like B C housing and the lines and the quotas or so forth, it's 33%. Where, do I misunderstand that, or could you explain that, please?
Just going to the definition. Sorry, I'm just going to the definition.
Okay, so it was in the 2017, uh, August eighth zoning bylaw, C O W request for decision on page two of three, about two thirds down the way, or close to the bottom, it says affordable housing is defined as housing which under the terms of a housing agreement with the city is priced such that the household's annual housing costs are not more than 18% of the median gross household income of the city of Duncan. I just wondered where you got 18% since everywhere else seems to be 33%? And can I please put my name in? Because if it's 18%, I'm moving. That was not a very nice thing to say. Just, I don't need the answer to that question right this very second if I'm putting you on the spot, but if, if you could come up with that answer at some point.
I can, I can provide the background and we also referred the, the definition as well to a lawyer and, and, and changed it according to his feedback. So, so I can provide that background.
Okay, that would be terrific. And my last question is about future vehicle sales not being permitted on the highway. Can you please explain to me what, I, I understand that what's there now will be grandfathered. Uh, what's the thinking?
Um, part of this relates to the official community plan and the development perimeter guidelines, um, within the highway corridor for the official community plan. Also mainly due to the fact that motor vehicle sales, the, the majority of the land is, is going to be used for, just covered in asphalt and, and, and not fully utilizing the land. So, um, so that was part of the background for that decision.
Did we actually discuss this? I'm sure it will come out at the, uh, public meeting, but I don't recall a discussion about.
Yes, it's discussed several times in several little presentations and, and, uh, with respect to the way the community, official community plan was, uh, brought in with a great public consultation and that was the, the desire to, you know, it, it's not the highest and best use of that particular urban land and, uh, this, this would make it congruent with the community plan, which has been adopted by council, uh, in 2007. And the guidelines that, that go along with that. Okay, any further questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Geno.
Thank you.
And I'll, I think this has been moved in second, so we will, if there's no further discussion, I'll call the question on it. Are all those in favor? Opposed? And motion carries. So we move on to, uh, bylaws for first, second, third reading. And we have item 10 one, which is a bylaw number 3163.01, financial plan amendment bylaw. The council give first three readings to the finan- financial plan amendment bylaw 3163.01 2017, a bylaw to amend the financial plan for 2017 to 2022. And Ms. Solder, would you just like to give some context to this?
Uh, over the last several months, council has made a number of recommendations and resolved to, uh, make certain actions and ask staff to bring forward a financial plan amendment, uh, rather than bringing forward, uh, an amendment every time that's happened. We waited till we had a few to bring forward in one financial plan. So this will actually make, uh, several different amendments. It will include the special grant that council approved for the support stacks, um, some changes to the cattle plan, including a sanitary sewer system condition and risk assessment, uh, the, and the transfer of funds to pay for the cleanup costs for Charles Heway Park related to the homeless encampment. So it just, uh, all of those resolutions that councils already passed and puts them into the bylaws, so it enacts them.
Okay, thank you. So is there a mover and secondor for this? Thank you, secondor. Thank you. And further discussion questions on this? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. We move to item two, which is bylaw number 3168, which is a bylaw repeal bylaw, uh, and the mo- motion being the council give three readings, the bylaw repeal mo- uh, bylaw number 3168 2017, a bylaw to repeal certain bylaws that have no further need, action, or consequence, and thus are redundant. And there was quite a list of them, uh, right from the beginning of time, I believe. And, uh, a great deal of work put into that, uh, by, uh, our, Ms. Robertson, our former corporate, uh, officer, uh, who did the research on all these. And so this is the law to repeal those redundant bylaws. So a mover and secondor? Moved and seconded, thank you. Any discussion on that? Counselor Jackson?
Well, this represents a huge amount of work and I just, I really appreciate it. I'm dying to know about the slingshot by, slot, slingshot bylaw. Are these old bylaws still around, uh, and available? Cause I think, I just find that absolutely amazing. It's like something out of the 40s.
Ms. McGraw.
Yeah, so thank you to the chair. Those bylaws are still on file and will remain so even after they've been repealed. So there's some, there's some great and, uh, interesting ones that are in there and, and they are open for anyone who'd like to look at them.
Counselor Staples?
I was thinking it would be good to, um, connect with the museum around too, if there's, particularly if there's any background information about what was happening that informed those bylaws, um, because reading them now, so many things have changed. And so it would be good to have an archive on public record too, about how things do change in communities over time, so.
I will be happy to connect with the museum to see if there's any interest in pursuing that project. I think that they'd probably be, uh, very interested to find out about some of these ones, cause they definitely tell a little bit of a story of the time.
Yeah. And we understand that the history and the present, uh, has some relevance in other discussions today, so. Okay, thank you. So, uh, if there's no further discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So we move to bylaw adoptions. We've got, uh, bylaw one 3109.01, appointment of officers amendment bylaw and the council adopt office appointment, uh, amendment bylaw number 3109.01 2017, a bylaw to amend the officer's appointment bylaw. Mover and a secondor? Moved? Secondor? Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. So we move to item 11 two, which is bylaw number 3129, mayor and council renumeration bylaw. The council adopt mayor and council renumeration bylaw number 3129 2017, a bylaw to set the renumeration for mayor and council for the 20, for 2018 onwards. Mover? Thank you. Secondor? Thank you. Any discussion? Counselor Jackson?
Um, I just think it would be important to say that nobody here is getting a huge raise. It's just, uh, being marginally raised, um, from the cost of being basically out of, um, Victoria. If somebody could explain that a little bit more clearly so that people don't think we're handing ourselves a big raise, that would be great.
I believe that it was, uh, us, per council policy, um, established a comparative group. So there, I believe there was some adjustment in the comparative group, uh, with respect to the community size and, uh, capacity. And then of course, the, uh, the annual increases to ensure that that doesn't slip so far behind as the previous bylaw that we passed, uh, had not been changed for almost 12 years. So, um, there was a significant change, uh, there. And I don't believe council that they went all the way. Uh, they just, uh, did what we felt the community could, uh, capacity could maintain. So, um, this is, it, it's a modest adjustment, but it does adhere to the policy of looking at the comparative groups as well, so. Okay. Ms. Solder, is there anything to add to that?
So I believe that, uh, the former Director of Corporate Services prepared the bylaw, but she did, um, go through the comparative group and determine that, uh, council's pay was in line with the comparative group, uh, now, because council had worked to increase it over time. So, um, councilor salaries will increase by the consumer price index for Victoria. Counselor Jackson was exactly right, uh, for years going forward. The mayor salary was actually noted to still be a little bit below, so will be increasing, um, by a small amount, uh, above that, so.
Okay. Counselor Bell?
Yeah, I thought we, I, I thought we did talk about this, like you said, the last time it was discussed was 12 years ago. But I thought we did talk about it and I thought we attached it to CPI. I thought like last term. Didn't we address council salaries like last year?
That was, that was actually, I, I believe approved prior to the last election. So it was adopted for a new council at the time.
So is this something else, or is this just?
This is for 2018 onwards.
So the, the bylaw that exists right now is for 2012 to 2017.
Seventeen, correct.
And so, um, we just needed to, uh, continue it on for 2018 and the future, so.
Okay, so just a continuation of what we had already decided six years ago. We're not doing another increase.
Excuse me, as, uh, Director of Finance has noted, the current bylaw ended in 2017. Uh, it only affords the CPI increases for 2017 for both ca- uh, councillors and the mayor. Uh, as we needed to project that for in 2018 and onward for CPI, uh, council also asked that we do that same comparative, uh, uh, comparison to, to confirm that, uh, because it had been five years since it was originally set to be CPI increases plus a small catch-up and it took five years, it could well be behind. It was determined by the, um, corporate, uh, Director of Corporate Services, uh, that the councillors were just, were in line with, uh, the comparative group, but the mayors, as, as mentioned, were slightly behind. So the mayors, uh, in this, I believe this item is up for, which readings is this bylaw up for today? It's adopted today?
It's up for adoption.
So it was at the last, uh, July committee, the whole meeting and then the, the July council meeting for first readings. It does adjust the mayor's salary from, uh, currently in 2017 from 25,500 to in 2018 would be increased to 28,300. So slight increase because the, uh, the mayor's salary was behind the comparative for that, for that, uh, as was told in the report back in July.
Okay. That answer questions?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And we go to item 11.3, bylaw number 3139, animal regulation impounding amendment bylaw. The council adopt the, uh, animal regulation impounding amendment bylaw 3139.02 2017, a bylaw to include licensing provisions for dangerous dogs. Moved? Seconded? Okay. Any discussion? Counselor Jackson?
So this is just housekeeping. It's just adding the word, uh, dangerous or to the word aggressive. So there's nothing, no big changes here. Thank you.
And we've given the prior three readings, you know, of the council, so. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Go to bylaw 3167 2017, fees and charges amendment bylaw. The council adopt fees and charges amendment bylaw number 3167 2017, a bylaw to charge fees associated with the licensing and impounding of dangerous dogs. And a related bylaw. Moved? Seconded? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We move to new business. Uh, we've got item 12 one. Uh, city hall to be lit up on, uh, August or October 10th, uh, to raise awareness for mental health, uh, day. And a motion to, uh, be lit up on, uh, purple on October 10th to raise awareness for mental health day. So mover? Secondor? Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So we move to council reports or councillors that would like to report, uh, for the last thing. Counselor Jackson, thank you. Counselor Staples, thank you. And I have a couple of things to, um, add. I'm not going to go over my calendar, cause I've attended a number of things and, uh, some consequential and some not, but I will report on one meeting we had today in closed session, in one meeting I had today in closed session. But I would like at this point to, uh, give special acknowledgement to the memory of Joan Gilat, um, who passed away recently, a, a free woman of the city, if we can coin a new phrase. Joan was always a, uh, strong individual and somebody who represented, uh, people who, uh, were in need, uh, very clearly. Uh, she had served, uh, terms on the school trustees board and with this council for nine years. And many, many com- community groups, including United Church and through her, uh, work in the union and was the, I believe, the first president of the, uh, woman president of the B C G U union in Victoria. I knew Joan personally, not well, but I did know her well, um, and met a number of her family at times. Uh, she was a, a friend of my mother's as well, uh, both fiercely independent women. And, uh, I just want to acknowledge all her contribution to not only, uh, women in society, but also to the whole community. She was a force to be reckoned with and she had something to get done. And I congratulate, uh, her for that. And I want to give her condolences, sincere condolences to her family, uh, for that loss. She did li- live a good life, 93 years of age. Um, and, uh, you know, sometimes with somebody's significant contribution, you don't want to lose anybody at any age. So I do appreciate what she brought to this community. And I, I would like to offer, uh, an opportunity for any councillor who would like to comment on their relationship with, uh, with Joan as well, so. Um, I also, uh, want to comment on, uh, just personally on, uh, some of the, um, international, I guess, and national or even global issue with respect to, um, the abhorrence of racism and, um, um, neo Nazism and white supremacy. I, I really feel quite strongly that I have to speak up about this. I think that, uh, one of the, uh, comments, I, and I'm not going to quote it directly because I, I, I can't remember the specific person, but I do remember, and both my parents fought in the Second World War against fascism and, uh, in, uh, in Nazi journey. Uh, so it, it comes quite dear to my heart with respect to how much we have to, um, be respectful of, of all people. This is one planet, one place, one home, and we have to respect, uh, every race, creed, gender, decision, anything. It's, uh, we're all here, we're all one and we're all together. I remember the, uh, the gist of the quote was that for good people to, um, not stand up and speak.
We only believe evil to prosper.
Prosperous, that good men do not stand up. And I think that the protests in the U S, uh, to try to create a moral equivalence league between people who are protesting hate and bigotry and, and that kind of thing is, is not morally equivalent. Those are good people standing up and speaking. And I think that that's, uh, very important to, certainly for me personally, to say that to our community. Um, and, uh, I'm sure that, uh, everyone here probably sh- shares similar values. So I just wanted to say that and that's it for my report. So, uh, Counselor Jackson?
Yes, thank you. I only have one thing to report today, um, which is the announcement of the new transit operations and maintenance facility, which is on, um, a 4.5 acre piece of property, uh, on Bull Road, just off of Poki Road. And, um, it is going to be, uh, for maintenance of, of the buses, washing them. The big office will be there and it's, uh, going to be, um, able to take up to 50 buses and will be, um, in use until at least 2033. Uh, and we will have 50 buses right now. I believe we only have around 30 or 31. And, um, they're going to be starting on work on that immediately as well as remediating what's presently ditching, but what used to be fairly significant stream down there. Um, I can't pronounce it in the First Nations language, but it's, it was called the busy place. And, uh, it was actually canoe route from one town, Georgetown, I believe, to another, uh, town. And it used to be a very busy stream. So now it's mostly, uh, underground and so forth, but the part that's still above ground, they're going to be doing remediation on either side of the stream and, and getting the water flowing again. So I think that's really good, cause actually it, it, parts of it actually are salmonberry. So, um, uh, this will be up and running and ready to use by, uh, 2018, end of 2018. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stables?
Um, it feels like all the, everything that I've attended in the past few weeks, things that have been happening, have been filled with a lot of either, you know, the twenty-nine days of July with a lot of, or thirty-nine days of July, I always get it mixed up, forty-nine. But we're filled with a lot of looking at our community and going to the markets and walking around, and just seeing how much vibrance there is in this community, particularly this time of the year, when everyone is outside and moving around. But also, the events, I attended the Burma event, D E P, last week, and it was, it was, it's one of, it's the first one I've ever been to, ever, in my life, and Mayor Laffabeur was there as well, and he spoke, and I was standing there, and someone had mentioned that one of the men carrying one of the flags had been there, and so I was thinking about just that, you know, the life that that person has lived, and how much they've seen, and it was right after finding out about the passing of Joan as well, and just the life that she led, and all the things that people contribute to society that we don't even know about, and that we're not aware of, and how many people have sat here and made so many decisions before we ever entered this building, and all of those, those events that happen is as people move through our community, and as people live in our community and participate, and how fortunate we are that we have so many people here that love this place. And so it was one of those things that, there was a lot of happiness, but also just a lot of heaviness at the same time, because like Joan's, one of Joan's daughters said, you know, ninety-three years is a long time, but sometimes it's just never enough, you know, there's still so much more, it's never a good time. And, and I'd like to just really honor Joan for everything that she did in the labor movement, for women's issues, for our community. The very first time that I ever met her, she terrified me. I was about twenty-four, and I walked into a meeting, and she looked at me, she said, "Who are you?" And for people who know Joan, that's Joan, and, but she taught me a lot about, about so many different things, and I really appreciate that, and she really mentored and encouraged a lot of women to get involved in places that women hadn't been involved, and she had a lot of times where I'm sure she felt like a voice sitting at this table in all the years that she was on council. And I'd also like to mention someone else in our community that just passed, his name was Brian Crawford, and people here may have known Brian. He was a real advocate for homelessness and addiction and mental health in the community, having lived on the streets, and about ten years ago, he was really featured a lot in the paper here, and sat on a lot of committees in town over the years, and his service was on Sunday at Long John's place, and person after person after person got up and talked about how he impacted their lives. And so we have these very public heroes and mentors that we all see in our community, but we also have a lot of people that we don't notice, and so it reminded me that, you know, there's, there are always people in every single place that we look out in our community, supporting people in ways that we could never know, and it was really heartbreaking and beautiful to see how many lives he changed, how many people he helped get, get out of their addiction, and, and someone that contributed a lot to, to how we look at things today in our community. So I wanted to honor him as well, and in alignment with what the mayor was speaking about, about the solar eclipse, the last thing that said, in the last solar eclipse in nineteen seventy-nine, I'll just read, read what was said, that thirty-eight years from now, the thinker said, "May the shadow of the moon fall on the world at peace." And today, we're not that world, but we're all here working towards that.
Okay, thank you. So we go to question period, so we don't have any public in the gallery, but is there any councillors who have questions with respect to the CEO's report, or anything else with respect to the agenda? Counselor Bell?
Comment, actually. Was it you, Talitha, that, through the mayor to you, that did the grant aid policy? I think you did a really good job of that. I remember leaving the last meeting and feeling regretful, I didn't let you know, but we really didn't give you a lot of input, and I remember reading it going, "God, she totally gets it." Like, there's little details in that, that unless you understand the process and the things that we have to do and the nonprofit, so I remember, actually, I was driving away feeling really impressed about that, and I get funny about silly things, but I read it, and I just thought, "That's way better than anything that I could have come up with," so thanks for the detail in that and doing that. It saves us so much grief later on, it's a hard process anyway, so, so thank you, well done, I was impressed.
Thank you. I try to say thank you to staff every day, on a daily basis, they say, they do work very hard on our behalf, and the citizens especially. Sharon? Counselor Jackson, I should say.
That's quite all right.
We're not on a first-name basis, unfortunately, in a business meeting.
Um, in regard to the Canada Avenue paving, I had a question about the two northernmost totem poles, or totem poles, telephone poles, hydro poles, whatever they are, just before Station Street on Canada Avenue, and are they coming down? And I did not know the answer.
So I believe currently there's three poles on Canada Avenue between that block. Only one will be coming down, which is the most southerly one. There will be two remaining, one at the midpoint of the building that used to house Bell, I believe, or maybe, and then one right at the corner. So we, but the lines south of that, most of that second pole, all the lines will remove south of that. There is one telephone pole on the south side of the block on Government Street that will be removed as part of the project as well. It's really sort of the first step towards undergrounding, it's, so it is a small, it's a small piece, but it's an important one, given that anytime you're reconstructing half a block, that's your opportunity to do that. So for the entire frontage and part of the Dakota Block, we're building, and about half of the neighboring property, the poles and lines will be removed.
Okay, it's probably completely and utterly my misunderstanding, but I thought that that big electric locks that's being put on the corner of Canada and Station Street was partially because you needed to take down those last two poles. Did I misunderstand?
So there.
I don't know if your microphone's on, is it?
There would have been originally three transformers on one of those, two, on one of the poles, that will, those are being removed, they will, those will be replaced by the electrical pad-mounted transformer at the corner of the intersection, but one of the, the pole about mid-building must remain, because it's got to be an anchor point for everything north of that, so until we remove the pole at the corner, which requires even more work, because it's got to go down each of the next blocks for half of it, until we, to that point, we can't remove the one at the midpoint of the block.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, any further questions? Hearing none, I would like motion to resolve to go in a closed meeting, that the meeting be closed to the public under the following sections of the charter, ninety-one C, labor relations and other employee relations, and ninety-two D, a matter that under the, another enactment, Freedom of Information Protection to Privacy Act, section twenty-two, is such that the public must be included from the meeting. Sorry? Oh, the additional misses, sorry.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify, ninety-two D is that the public must be excluded.
Excluded, yes. Did I include it? No, that was a slip. Okay, so is there a mover and seconded for that? Thank you, moved, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried, thank you. So we'll take a short five-minute recess and remain in to closed.